You are watching XS LaPorte County Channel 97. Coming up next is the October 28th, 2024 meeting of the LaPorte County Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www.xslaportecounty.org.
Okay. We're going to call the LaPorte County Council regular meeting for October 22nd, 2024 to order. If everybody please silence their phone, we're going to stand for the pledge and we're going to remember, take a moment of silence for Joe Everhart, Hampel, who passed away, and also my brother-in-law Bob. So if everybody please stand for the pledge. Mr. Cunningham?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which has standed, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please. Councilman Cunningham?
Present.
Councilman Rosenbaum?
Present.
Councilman Karanka?
Present.
Councilman Mullenar?
Present.
Councilman Novak?
Present.
Councilman Yagelski?
Present.
And Councilman Keel?
Present.
All seven are here. Moving on, approval of tonight's agenda. Mr. Karanka?
Motion to approve with the following adjustments. If we go to new business item two and page five, LaPorte County building maintenance services and charges for mitigation work, the last item for 49,174, both those items would be removed.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Karanka, second by Mr. Yagelski. Is there any other questions or comments, changes? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The other person, I just want to mention, Dennis Neary was a state rep and was very involved. He had passed away also, so please keep him in your thoughts and prayers. So as we move on with our meeting, approval of the minutes from the September 30th workshop memorandum. So, Mr. President. Mr. Yagelski?
Second.
Second by Mr. Karanka. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Next one is September 30th, regular meeting minutes.
I have one correction.
Okay.
It is on page 25 of the minutes. I had brought up that the reason why I stated that I was not going to vote for it is that is that I did not feel that this motion was appropriate for the council to make such a request of the commissioners, and that is not in the minutes, and I'd like that to be added to the minutes.
Can you repeat that again, how you?
Mr. Rosenbaum stated he did not feel this motion is appropriate for the council to make such a request of the commissioners.
Any other corrections, or was that a motion with that correction?
That's a motion with that correction.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Karanka. Any other changes? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Public comment, public comment is now open. Anybody from the public that would like to speak? Anybody from the public that would like to speak?
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Rodney McCormick, 617 Union Street, Michigan City. I wasn't at the last meeting. Some of my other fellow commissioners from the social status came requesting for funds. The commissioner office approved it, and I'm here today. I didn't see us on the agenda, but I just wanted to briefly speak, if I may, about some of the stuff that's going on in our city. And I just want to tell you, these funds are sorely needed. After reading the Department of Education records, I just wanted to say a couple of numbers to you guys. At our high school in 20, for the 2023-2024 year, we had 188 suspension, in-house suspensions, 487 out-of-school suspensions, eight arrests, 122 incidents of violence, and 50 expulsions. We looked at the, looked at the numbers regards to attendance for our 12th graders last year. They only had a, in African-American community, we only had a 12.2% attendance rating. 11th grade didn't fare much better, I believe it was at 16%. The one thing that just blew me away when I looked at these numbers were eight, 9.5% of the students who graduated, and this I believe was a class of 294, only, they, only 28 of them graduated without a waiver. That means 260 of our kids graduated with a waiver. I come to this council, I come over here to LaPorte because I do believe in bipartisanship. I believe in working with everybody to make things better. Unlike some of our colleagues in Michigan City, if we all work together, we can make things better for the kids in our community. As African-American, and the president of the African-American males, I just could not believe these numbers. I mean, the calls for service got sex offenses on it, weapon charges, fight, 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 search warrant, drugs, drugs, it just goes on, it's a whole list, it just goes on in our school. So this money will greatly, we would greatly like to have this money, and I hope you guys continue to work with us, but, you know, I just wanted to get that off my chest because I'm hurt behind what I've seen.
Thank you.
Unfortunately, you know, school board got to do what they got to do, and we got to do what we got to do as citizens. And if I can just say anything to everyone out here that's going to listen to this today, every school board in this county, everybody, that's the most important seat to me. And I hope that you guys get out and vote, and make your vote count, or else you'll get what we getting right now in Michigan City.
Mr. Karanka?
Yes. Just one thing to state, you are on the agenda of tonight, page four towards the bottom.
I didn't see it, so thank you.
Welcome. Thank you. Any other public comments? Any other public comments?
Good evening, thank you for the opportunity to come up and speak. My name is Mike Kellum, Zillow 159 Regency here in LaPorte. I wanted to talk to you, I know that you guys are heavily involved in the finances of the county, and a lot of your work involves and revolves around that. If you look at tonight's agenda, it's obvious the amount of effort that has to go into it, and it's a, it's a difficult task, but something that everybody does very well. That being said, I wanted to bring a ray of light, a little bit of sunshine to some of our county employees. About 10 days ago, I was working, and I heard the county start to get busy, our emergency services, there were, it was in the morning, there were a couple of accidents, one down on Highway 30 near Stairway 39, one on 800 South in Union Mills. They were severe, they were talking about bringing in helicopters, and very quickly our ambulances got tied up. And for those that are involved in emergency services, understand, we have eight ambulances, they're numbered one through eight. As I was listening to all these calls developed, there were a couple of calls that were put out, and we were out of ambulances, just out of it. And it doesn't happen very often, you get busy at one time, it kind of ebbs and flows, and doesn't happen as often, thank goodness. And as I, as I continued to listen, I heard a Medic 9 pop up, and we don't have a Medic 9 other than a backup rig or something they use for some standby. And shortly after that, I heard a Medic 10 pop up and go to another call. So a couple of days later, I had the opportunity to talk to Eric Fenstermaker, the EMS director, and I said, I heard that, you guys are really busy, where did the Medic 9 and Medic 10 pop up? And this is what really struck me, and I thought I wanted to bring it to your attention. Because you guys get so involved in the financial stuff, and I don't know that the good news always reaches to you, and it doesn't get spoken enough at the council meetings, or commission meetings for that matter, they were off-duty employees that had just finished their shift, and they came back in and got a backup rig and responded to the calls. I think it's outstanding of our EMS, and I think that speaks to why the state of Indiana recognizes them as being a paramedic provider of the year, the sixth time in the 50 years that they've existed. I think it's important that we take an opportunity to recognize all of our employees when they do something outstanding like that, and it doesn't get heard of. Nobody would have known if I hadn't been paying attention, or happened to be working that day, I don't know if it would have been recognized outside of the EMS administration. And I thought it was important to bring it to the attention of the council. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mike, and you know what, I think we need to give them EMS employees a round of applause.
Being that it is National First Responder Day, I think that's very appropriate. So for, to all the first responders throughout LaPorte County and throughout the country, we salute everybody, so. Anybody else from the public? Anybody on Zoom? Anybody on Zoom that would like to?
This is Commissioner Brzezinski, I can either speak under public or department head, might even be better on public. Looking at your agenda, I know we've had at least three presentations from Enterprise about fleet management, and they showed us where they would take in part of our fleet of old vehicles, and so they could sell them, and there would be enough money that we would be replaced with all brand-new vehicles, had no cost to the county, and that every year after that of managing our fleet, they would save the county a bunch of money, and it would make your job a little bit easier for, for scheduling, for budgeting fleet, because it would be a set cost. But I see that it's not on your agenda, so I just wonder where are we at with that? It's just a chance for the county to, to do what a lot of other counties and cities are doing all over, the, all over the state, all of the United States, and save a lot of money in the meantime, but, and we kind of beat it to death with workshops and presentations, but it's not on your agenda. So what's, where are we at? What's going on with that?
If, if, I'll discuss it with some of the council members, and if there's a desire, we'll add it to our November agenda, so.
We'll be watching.
The best we can do.
Thank you, Randy.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Public comment going once, twice, public comments closed? Department head reports? Any department heads like to speak?
Ella Bilderbeck, LaPorte County Recorder, just wanted to give you guys a quick update. I've had 250 of the deed books deacidified. Three of them had new covers put in, they have metal hinges that were broken, and six plat books have been treated and restored. So I feel that the progress is being made really quickly, and I'm very happy with the work that's been accomplished so far, so.
Great. Are all the old books all up? Are they still working on those, updating those? The old books that were down in the basement and stuff?
I never had any books in the basement. Mine were all in the vault, I have a two-story vault, so I was lucky, mine were never in the basement.
But have those all been updated? With what you've been doing, you've been working on that?
Oh, that's a fraction of it.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a small fraction.
It's a process.
I started the deed books because those are the most important, and then the next will be the books that keep track of the deed books, which are in very poor condition unfortunately, because those were handled a lot more, and so some of the pages are in really poor.
That wasn't a trick question, I was just asking.
We were just talking two different languages, that's all.
That's fine, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other department heads?
Hi, Jeremy Svecky from Parks Department, and Mitch Bishop here, but Mitch sent you an email last week about a grant for solar panels on the roof of Red Mill County Park Office and Rental Hall, and this is something that originally Paul Vincent, when he was working for the county as the economic development, or whatever it was, pre-applied the county for this project, $78,820, and we were basically like pre-approved through the, who's this through?
It's the U.S. Department of Energy.
Yeah, so it's 100% grant, they pay for, we pay for it upfront, and then they pay us back. And Mitch's email, basically it would, it's estimate, we got an estimate from a company that it will cost right around that amount, and then it would save, over the life of the solar panels, it's going to save the county about $140,000, about $2,300 in the first year, and then each year after it's, you know.
It's calculated over 50 years.
Yeah, so, and we just got that new roof on there, metal roof, so that it's not like we're going to have to put those on and take them off, and that kind of thing, so I'm hoping for, we got the call that this was, the final, to finalize the application was due by the 31st of October, and this was last week that we got this call from Department of Energy, so.
We had no idea.
Yeah, we didn't.
We didn't know.
Didn't know he applied, I had talked to Paul about that project, but he applied, and we're wanting, we were hoping for a motion of support from the council.
To move forward with the?
To move forward with the grant and do this project, so.
You put this at Red Mill?
Yeah, it'll be on the backside of the roof at Red Mill, yeah.
Motion by Mr. Yagelski, second by Mr. Rosenbaum.
Yeah, just can we just state how much money, the gross amount is, and what the cost is going to be?
The grant is $78,820.
I just wanted to repeat it.
Yep.
One other quick question, we spoke about roof loading in terms of snow load and the load that these are creating.
Yeah.
We get the trust plan and check it out.
Yeah.
I'm sure it'll be fine, we'll double check it though.
Okay.
I have contacted Mike on that, and he's going to work with us on that as well.
Good deal.
So, thank you.
Let the record indicate that Mike gave two thumbs up on that.
Two, two.
Mike Pollan.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Well, in that same vein, Mitch Bishop, LaPorte County Planner, I think part of that email was also my application to NDOT for group three funds to support two bridge rehabs, one is Bridge 114, and one is 180. One is on Range Road 114, it's roughly Stones Throw from Kingsford Heights, just north of Kingsford Heights, and 180 is on 1600 South, about two and a half miles directly south of Hannah. They're both on our top five for replacement in our bridge inspection report. So as you know, about this time of year, there's always an open call, and we try to do the best to get the most money we can. And with that, I sent you a commitment letter, a commitment letter is required to apply for these every year. Unfortunately, the grant doesn't open until November 1st, and it closes November 24th, which is before your next meeting, so I need the commitment letter signed prior to that so I can include it in the application package. Roughly, it's $3.2 million, I'm going to be receiving 80% for those two bridges, and you'd be responsible for the 20, naturally, like every, every year, yeah.
Mr. Yagelski?
Mitch, could you make sure that we give us the packet with those, because we didn't see any pictures, I don't, we?
Oh, I haven't put together the application yet, but I will.
It's not application, this is the engineering, when they came out, looked at, this is not.
Oh, you're talking about the bridge inspection report?
Yes. If those are the top, which is fine, we don't disagree with it, can we please see the photos?
Yeah, no problem, I'll send them both here, I sent all of, all you guys.
So, Mr. President.
Motion by Mr. Yagelski, second by Mr. Cunningham, is there any other questions?
Did I send you a copy of these letters?
I don't believe you did. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Any other department heads?
I'll make it quick. Lynn Swanson, LaPorte County Coroner, I spoke to you all a couple months ago about a program that we were trying to launch for psychological autopsies. You approved appropriating money from the coroner's office to put with the grant that we received from the Healthcare Foundation. The program was launched last month during Suicide Awareness Month. The deputy that we hired, that is a psychologist, Dr. Drapu, is working with families now to try to gather information, offering them assistance for counseling or whatever other treatments they may need, and trying to get his data put together, so as soon as I have some data from him, I'll present that as well.
Thank you, appreciate it. Any other department heads? Any other department heads? Anyone Zoom? No? Hearing none? Moving on to, there is one other correction I want to make, I want to go back to the minutes. In the minutes, it was stated, and forgive me, the Community Correction Director, Marika Beatty clarified that. Page number, please. Page number five. But it's not a correction, but it states that no formal vote was taken on the motion. So the motion to support to approve the retroactive pay for the employee back to their starting date was made by Mr. Cunningham and second by Mr. Yagelski. So if we could, I don't remember us never voting on that, but I know they watched the video, so maybe we skipped the vote on that, so at this time, is that, can you, you want to make those?
My motion stands.
Mr. Yagelski?
Stands.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
So we corrected that. Liaison reports. Mr. Cunningham?
I'll wave.
Mr. Yagelski?
I'll wave, just except for the one thing that, last my sister 16 years, who had breast cancer, we're paying tonight for breast cancer, I don't want to jump on Adams, but he'll tell you the same thing, so, for Breast Cancer Month.
Definitely, thank you.
Just two things, attended the AIC Conference and the Auditor's Conference.
Adam, wave.
Wave.
Justin?
Wave.
Wave. So moving on, correspondence, a letter from LaPorte City Mayor Veterans Committee?
Would you like it read, or no? It's pretty short, up to you.
Just, let her give us a?
We can do, it's in there, sorry?
It's in our package, it's an invitation to the?
An invitation to the Mayor's Veterans, the Veterans Day Program at the Civic Auditorium, 10:30 a.m., November 11th. Veterans Day, the Civic is of course at 1001 Ridge Street in LaPorte.
Thank you.
From Lisa Rosenbaum, Mayor's Veterans Committee.
Thank you. Moving on, we have ordinance 2023-12 Amendment Number 3 to the 2024 Salary Ordinance. By title only?
Mr. President, make a motion to read by title only.
Motion by Ms. Yagelski, by title only.
Second.
By Mr. Karanka. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
For clarification, this ordinance is just clearing up and putting dot in the i's and crossing the t's for salary changes.
Okay. Tim?
The motion, do you read it?
Do you read it?
You didn't read it yet.
By title only.
Did you guys vote on it?
We asked for title only, yes.
We did.
Yes.
Oh my goodness.
Yeah.
The 2024 Salary Ordinance Amendment Number 3. Mr. President, make a motion to adopt.
Motion by Ms. Yagelski.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mullenar. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Next item is the, wait, did Justin, did you?
I said aye.
Okay, just want to make sure, I didn't, I heard you. Next item is ordinance 2024-10A, LaPorte County Solid Waste Budget Adoption.
Mr. President, make a motion to read ordinance 2024-10A by title only.
Motion by Mr. Yagelski, title only, second by Mr. Rosenbaum, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Please, please mark me as an abstention since I'm not physically present.
All right.
I'm not allowed to vote on it.
Thank you, gentlemen, this might be the last time you see me this year, so I want to wish you ones that are running for election, good luck, the ones that have served, we appreciate all the support you've given us through the couple of years, and the ones that are going to be switching tables, we wish you the best of luck also, so.
Thank you. Let the record indicate that Clay Turner looked at me when he said that.
Don't want to say anything.
Oh, we still got to pass it, we haven't passed it yet. I wouldn't, boy, that was.
Be sure they didn't vote on that.
Oh. And just be careful. Yagelski has a question.
So, before we vote on it, I like to, like in the past years past, the raises for LaPorte County Solid Waste Budget will be reflective of what the council receives this
I understand that, and that's normally the way it is, I take it to my board at our December meeting for our salary ordinance.
Yeah, great. We just didn't want you to do something that we didn't do.
Oh, don't think that Councilman Mullenar is going to let me get away with doing something that you guys did.
Good.
Keep him in line.
Thank you.
Right.
By title only.
Yes, Mr. President, Ordinance Resolution for Appropriations and Tax Rates, Ordinance Number 2024-10A for the LaPorte County Solid Waste Management. Mr. President, make a motion for ordinance 2024-10A to be adopted as read.
Motion by Ms. Yagelski, second by Mr. Rosenbaum, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you. As always, Mr. Auditor, that has to be uploaded by November 3rd on Gateway, thank you.
Mr. Damski, where are you?
Next item is ordinance 2024-10B, Hannah Township Budget Adoption.
Mr. President, I can make a motion for ordinance 2024-10B to be read by title only.
Motion by Ms. Yagelski, second by Mr. Karanka, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Please, sir?
Yes, sir, Mr. President, Ordinance Resolution for Appropriations and Tax Rates for the Hannah Township, Ordinance Number 2024-10B. Mr. President, I can make a motion for ordinance 2024-10B to be adopted as read.
Motion by Mr. Yagelski.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cunningham. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, under discussion, I just want to give a shout out to Hannah Township. Last year, a member of the public came and spoke during this, this budget hearing, and one of the issues they brought up was the township's investment policy. Since last year, I spoke with trustee Tony Wallace recently, and he informed me that it looks like they're on track to make about $2,000 in interest revenue using Trust Indiana, so just a shout out to them for being a model township and how they're managing and investing their funds.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Next item is ordinance 2024-10C, LaPorte County Budget Adoption.
Mr. President, I can make a motion for 2024-10C to be read as title only.
Motion by Ms. Yagelski.
Second.
Second by Mr. Karanka, by title only. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
You voted. Mr. President, Ordinance Resolution for Appropriations and Tax Rate for LaPorte County, Indiana, Ordinance Number 2024-10C.
What's your pleasure?
Mr. President, question, so, this is 2024-24-2025? What's this ordinance for? It's the 2025 budget. Okay, okay. Yeah, for the year end in December 31st, 2025. Okay, Mr. President, I have to remind you, auditor, that Purdue University, we don't see any raises this year, Purdue University always gives raises to their employees, but they expect us to pay for it, we don't pay, they have to, they have to pay for their own raises if they adopt their raises.
That would need to be when they provide their contract to the commissioners, they need to look at that, so.
They should be paying, they should be paying, every year, they should be paying for their own raises. Because they give well above what we do, so. Mr. President, I can make a motion to adopt for LaPorte County Budget Adoption for 2024-10C as read.
Motion by Mr. Yagelski.
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Mullenar. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Abstention.
Abstention. A nay and an extension.
The third page is your signature page, can we get the Hannah one back from you as quick as possible to give to Mr. Damski so he can leave, please?
I think it's sitting down here.
It's right here.
Oh, right here, right there.
Send that one back down if you could.
Sir.
Thank you very much.
Come over that way. He's going to, he's going to grab it.
I got it. Only through me.
Only through me.
I think it just needs ten seconds.
Turner, go take this one. Oh, wait, here we are. Is this, is this the one?
This is, this is his. No, this is ours. Jeez. Hannah's down there. Hannah's went through already, yeah.
Wait a second, we got it.
Hannah Barbera? Oh, wait a second, that was Hannah's, I got to take that back. Got to fix something. Seriously. I thought it was a different one.
Oh, you marked the wrong box.
Not for you guys. Initially.
I apologize, Mr. President.
Thank you. Still, yeah. No, no, can't amend all this.
All right. So that completes all our ordinances.
It does.
We approved the budget, everything.
She wants it, she wants it.
For something we missed, Mr. Ogalski?
No, he's getting to it.
Moving on to old business. Tabled request from September regarding the HR assistance, is there any desire to remove that from the agenda at this time? Is there any desire to remove that from the agenda at this time? If not, it will remain on the agenda. Moving on to new business. Consider approval of council president's authority to hire replacement positions, Laporte County Animal Control, the Assistant Director, and a clerk in the sheriff's office. Those are the two.
Motion to approve.
Both?
Both.
Second by Mr. Rosenbaum, second by Mr. Karanka. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Next item is Health Department, Amanda Lehner, Director of the Health Department regarding the nurse pay grid.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
Good evening. Do you want me to just dive right in, or do you have questions about?
Dive right in.
To you.
Dive.
Dive, dive, dive. I've been talking about the last several years about getting nursing salary raised up to be more competitive in the area and to make it, even with the other health departments in the state, I provided a study that was done by the IU School of Fairbanks that compared health departments within the state of Indiana and also within EPA Region Five showing salaries. And also the surrounding counties. Yeah, the last, since I've been, since before COVID, we have not been fully staffed in the nursing department. If you remember, I gave up one of my nursing spots to be able to get an MA, to give us some relief, but I still have a vacant spot. And it will hire somebody, last for a couple of months, and hire somebody might last a year or two, hire somebody, it's just been a complete revolving door, and it keeps coming back to salary. So we now also have our Health First Indiana Funds, which is coming directly from the state to pay salaries, so it's not coming out of tax levy or general fund or any of that. So I submitted a proposed pay grid.
Just go through that pay grid real quick, would you please? Just so that people in the public can hear it, so.
So the starting salary after six-month probation, our N would be at fifty-six thousand five hundred and eighty-five dollars starting, and the nursing manager would be at sixty thousand two hundred and eighteen dollars starting. Sixty thousand two hundred and eighteen, I think, is that right?
What's your pleasure? This would be for twenty twenty-five?
Correct, for twenty twenty-five.
Correct.
Yes, sir.
I just want to clarify that we're not, this is not a retroactive.
No, sir.
You'll have sufficient funds from Indiana.
Yes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cunningham, second by Mr. Karanka. Is there any other questions on the nursing pay grid? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is the Fund Eighty-two Seventy-five Budget for twenty twenty-five.
That would be paying for our, the position that you approved, the health specialist slash school liaison coming out of the fund directly from the state, there's four hundred and forty thousand dollars that were received for that school liaison. That will pay that position for about four and a half years.
Motion approved.
Second by Mr. Karanka, second by Mr. Mullenhour. Is there any other questions or comments regarding Fund Eighty-two Seven Five?
Does he have a copy of it?
Is it in our pack, it's in the packet?
It should be in the packet, I submitted it all.
You got a copy of it?
We just, we got the sheet.
Let it go.
That it?
That's it, got it right there.
Got it?
Got it.
It's not in the sort of format that anticipated, so.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you.
Did somebody make a motion, I missed?
Next item is updated budget for Fund eleven sixty-one.
So that's for the nurses for next year, for, to update, so it matched the one forty-fours for next year.
Motion on that?
First, was it in the budget that was just passed?
Do we need to reamend the salary ordinance now?
Well, it wouldn't be the salary ordinance, because that was for two, this will go to the new salary.
Twenty-fives?
Yes.
Okay. We just amended twenty-three for the retroactive pay that we did for the people.
Mr. Rosenbaum, for more of a clarification, you asking more for the, amending the budget that we just passed?
Yes. Because if this affects twenty twenty-five, then.
We need to go back and amend the budget.
Rhonda, is the eleven sixty-one, was that in the budget, or is that a separate?
Well, it's in, it's.
I think she's there, isn't she?
Not coming out of the general fund, so is that? But I mean, it is.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
So everything was in the budget, except, and I forget, Amanda, if you can remind me what title it was, and I'll leave a note for the next auditor. But one amount did not get done before it was submitted, which I think is the supervisors? Is that the one that we found out was low?
For next year?
Yeah.
It was supervisors and nurses.
There's only one of them, I think that's wrong, but what will happen is, because it wasn't done before the budget was advertised, it will need to be appropriated next year. But, so you can't amend the budget now.
We just approved a budget that's not correct? That we know has a correction?
No, you adopted a budget, you can't change anything after you advertise it. Once it's advertised, remember, we had the note on there, you can't ever, you can't adopt higher than what's advertised.
I get it, I get it.
So it will have to be appropriated next year, and I'll leave a note on my desk.
There's a note of eighty-two thousand two hundred and eighty-three dollars that will need to be added and after January.
So just a point of clarification, as I'm looking at this ordinance, I see all the funds listed, and eleven sixty isn't on our standard funds, you go to the Home Rule Funds. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Attorney, eleven sixty-one. And eleven sixty-one is not listed on our Home Ruled Funds either, it's just not listed on this document at all.
Just waiting to prove it.
So it looks like the first of the year, you're going to have to appropriate the monies out of these funds, and we'll get it on the salary ordinance, and then, break.
They were approved already, so they will be on the salary ordinance, just so you know, it just needs to be appropriated.
Well, they weren't approved, because they're just approving it right now.
No, they had to approve it to be advertised.
I don't, okay.
I don't follow. I'm serious, I don't follow that.
All right. All right, so updated budget for Fund eleven sixty-one, is there a motion? Is there a motion?
I disagree, we have to do it in twenty twenty-five.
I'm going to look to our attorney.
Is there other?
Belt and suspenders, Mr. Rosenbaum. Do it now, get it appropriated, if it needs to be appropriated in two thousand and twenty-five.
Got it.
Motion approved.
Motion by Mr. Karanka. Seconded by.
Second.
Mr. Cunningham. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Yes.
Mr. Ogalski.
President, I'm sorry, I forgot to do this when we talked about the budget, so motion to adjourn the twenty twenty-five budget process?
There's a motion to adjourn the twenty twenty-five budget process, seconded by Mr. Rosenbaum. Is there any other questions or comments? Just brings the budget to.
I'm not meeting.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Anything else?
It's a turn, I just, I forgot about that, sorry.
All right.
Technicalities, I mean.
Next item, moving on to appropriations, transfers, and requests. Laporte County Health Department requesting transfer for a salary increase for twenty twenty-four, seven hundred and sixty-two dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, seconded by.
Mr. Cunningham.
Mr. Cunningham. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is Laporte County Parks Department requesting a transfer to purchase a trailer in the amount of thirty-nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents.
Motion to approve. Mr. President, I'll give the penny for a second.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, seconded by Mr. Ogalski, with a question. Oh, and a penny, you know. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Next item is Park Department's requesting, this is for the grant, it's a twenty thousand dollar grant, and we're appropriating the money for it, it's all going to come back.
Yep.
So that's, the next two items cover that. So it's an additional appropriation for a twenty twenty, for a grant, twenty-four for bike and pedestrian grant for the consultant, twenty thousand dollars.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, seconded by Mr. Mullenhour and Mr. Karanka.
Roll call, Mr. President.
Is there any questions or comments before we call a roll? Hearing none?
Councilman Rosenbaum?
Yes.
Councilman Ogalski?
Aye.
Councilman Kyle?
Aye.
Councilman Mullenhour?
Aye.
Councilman Karanka?
Aye.
Councilman Cunningham?
Aye.
Councilman Novak?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Next item is requesting appropriation for the claim for non-reverting park fund. This is the.
Part of the match. Part of the match.
So this is part of the match for the, the grant, the twenty thousand dollar grant.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion by Karanka, seconded by Mr. Rosenbaum. Any questions or comments?
I don't, I'm sorry.
Well, it's, it's out of their fund. It's out of their non-reverting fund.
Yeah, it's, it's money in our non-reverting fund that'll just be put into.
To cover the rest of the costs.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so they just put all these on for nothing? And we need, they put these on for nothing, that was all the rest of the stuff?
That's the next one, yeah. Hang on. Do we need to do a roll call on it? No? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
You going to stick around for this one?
I imagine.
Next item is Laporte County Park MS Four Planning Commission and Building Department requests additional appropriation from several different accounts for capital purchase, grant match for electric trucks and public charging stations, ninety thousand dollars.
This is the continuation from last month, I think we, all of us came up before you. I think we're minus MS Four Director tonight, but he instructed us to come back this month for appropriation. This is for the Ford Lightnings, the EV trucks, of course, Jeremy, to the left of me, he's getting two, Mike's getting one, MS Four is getting the other one, and also a Ford, like you want, Bay or Charger Station at the Parks Department. Our match on that is ninety thousand, but we will be getting, upon receipt of the vehicles, seventy-five hundred dollars back from the IRS, so it'll be minus thirty, so. And they have been ordered, correct? We placed the order as instructed last month.
Got it. Mr. Ogalski.
Just a question, so I know it's probably convenience and everything else, but I think something like this is good to put on the public for uses for everything, is there any way this could be plugged in at the fairgrounds instead?
That's right.
So, the, the public charging station, or the? No, just a charging station itself, because it can be utilized if we want to, it's, it just, good management to put it in the public, in my opinion, but if it's not, then you need to tell me.
Where's the four vehicles going?
So, so each of the vehicles comes with a charger that can be plugged in to the two-twenty, or, or.
Two-twenty.
Two-twenty, two-twenty-one.
If you go to four-forty.
So, one of them, one of those will be, one of those will be at the Parks Department, or two of those will be at the Parks Department. One will be wherever you guys need it, and then the other would be. Yeah, so, and the public charging station would be at one of the parks for the public to be able to use. And I just would like to see if that could be put in the fairgrounds, but it's my, it's just, my opinion.
We'd have to check. I could definitely check on that, I mean, it was written in the grant for the parks, so we could see if we can amend it.
The thing, it wouldn't be a, it's not a public charging station.
The one is.
The one is.
Okay. And the thought was that, what better place to spend forty-five minutes or an hour at a park, to where you have something to do besides just, you know.
Why it's charging.
This is the way of the future, so it would make sense to put it in a central location like that, that's just my opinion.
Was it at Red Mill, is that where it was going to be?
Yeah, the thought was that, we, the thought I had was, it's right there between Island Forty-four and the toll road, so you, you can catch those people, plus you're, you know, in a, in a heavily populated, somewhat populated.
There'll be more opportunities too, for more public, there's more dollars available, and maybe in the future ones, so we could put it downtown. If, if we can't, this one, Mark.
Yeah, whatever. Motion to approve out of Lit Economic Development, one-one-one-two.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, seconded by Mr. Mullenhour. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Which one? Councilman Cunningham. Councilman Keel.
Aye.
Councilman Karanka.
Aye.
Councilman Mullenhour?
Aye.
Councilman Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Councilman Yagowski.
Nay.
And Councilman Novak.
Aye. Thank you.
Five-two. Which fund, I'm sorry, was that again, I apologize.
Which what?
Fund.
One-one-one-two.
Lit. Thank you.
Next item is weights and measurements, requesting a transfer.
Second.
Five dollars, motion by Mr. Cunningham, seconded by Mr. Rosenbaum. Any questions, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Next item is Lapeur County Auditor. Transferring for the annual fee for bond, five hundred dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, seconded by Mr. Cunningham, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Next item is requesting a fund transfer from Riverboat to Rainy Day Fund, the amount of five hundred and thirteen thousand, one hundred and fifty-eight dollars and seventy-nine cents.
Motion to approve.
I'll second, then a comment.
Motion by Mr. Karanka, seconded by Mr. Rosenbaum.
In something that was very unusual, and I, and I double-checked this, we received a very large payment recently, which was unusual, a one-point-two million dollar payment, am I correct?
Um, I couldn't, that's off the cuff.
I'm gonna share.
It happens once a year.
Yeah, so we did receive a very large payment, and if, because I had remembered that we had been keeping up to date and even awkwardly with the last payment, so this, uh. This gets us caught up. Thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Next item is request additional appropriation. For the Lapeur County Drug Service. Fund. This is their, their. I'm just gonna go to the bottom line, current budget is a hundred and eighty-seven thousand, nine hundred and sixty-four dollars. Less the current receipts that they've received of sixty-six thousand, two hundred and eighty, so the amount requested is a hundred and twenty-one thousand, six hundred and eighty-five dollars. I, I guess I have a question, is this was never budgeted?
It was budgeted, if you'll remember, what it is, is it's budgeted for some reason in their supplemental fund, but it's supposed to be budgeted in the general fund. So what has happened in all of the years before now? Was the auditor's office would move that money from unappropriated general to their supplemental fund to pay the difference. But we got it fixed for next year, it will be in the general fund, but we do have to take care of it one more year, because it wasn't known until after that budget was made.
So the budget we adopted is correct?
Correct, yes.
What's your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Keel. From which fund?
No strong preference.
Well.
ERP.
Can I, can I, can I just add?
Sorry, that's not one listed.
Yeah, it's listed.
Okay.
Oh, there is another line, probably ERP then.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Karanka. Any questions? Hearing none, roll call.
Councilman Rosenbaum.
Nay.
Councilman Yagowski.
Nay.
Councilman Keel.
Aye.
Councilman Mullenauer.
Nay.
Councilman Karanka.
Aye.
Councilman Cunningham.
Nay.
And Councilman Novak.
Nay.
We have three ayes and four nays, motion fails.
Just keep in mind that that will have to be done by the end of the year, it's in the statute that the council pays for it. Or that the county pays for it.
Moving on to the Lapeur County Auditor, requesting additional appropriation on behalf of the Board of Commissioners for payroll deductions. Budgets from several different accounts, personal services, this is for the group health insurance, this, am I correct that this would take us through the end of the year? One million, eighteen thousand, five hundred. And forty-nine thousand dollars.
Mr. President?
Mr. Yagowski.
Uh, question, I'm sorry, this one here, I'm right through, I just don't get it, doesn't, wasn't this part of the Commissioner's budget? I know, where's our money in the Commissioner's budget?
This was written into the Commissioner's budget from twenty-three into twenty-four, for this year's budget.
I understand, but there was funds in there, all, all these, to date, use these funds for something else, how do we go through?
So, so not only, not only is there the group health insurance for one million. Plus, there's Medicare. OS, OAS, DI and perf. We underfunded the perf by three hundred and eighteen thousand dollars.
Adam, I'm agreeing with you, but we didn't underfund these, these things aren't.
Is there an answer for this?
I know you had, Randy, you had asked Carl to come look at it, did he give you a report or?
So the, the health, the group health insurance premium, we had talked about. Because the, there was eight hundred thousand dollar increase last year that was never put into this budget, plus, I think there's about fifty additional employees. That were added to the policy that we're not, we were not.
Budgeted for.
Budgeted for.
Yeah, and looking at these, they've gone negative every year, so I assume it just wasn't, since no one was watching it last year, it just may not have been budgeted correctly.
So, but perf, we're short three hundred and eighteen thousand dollars plus in perf?
All of those numbers are what we've come up with, yes.
Make any sense, Mr. President?
You wanna table it?
Motion to table, second.
Motion to table by Mr. Yagowski, seconded by Mr. Karanka, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
I have one nay.
Is that for? We'll ask for clarification, are we adding, is that including the five hundred thousand dollars?
No, sir, no, sir.
Okay, that's, I just wanna make sure we're.
Yes, sir.
Roll call.
Keel. Councilman Keel.
This is on the prior vote that we just took, or on something?
Motion to table. Motion to table.
I'm a nay on that.
Councilman Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Councilman Mullenauer.
Aye.
Councilman Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilman Yagowski.
Aye.
Councilman Novak.
Aye.
Councilman Karanka.
Aye.
Six ayes, one nays, tabled.
Next item, personal services fund, forty-seven hundred group health insurance claims, an amount of five hundred thousand dollars.
So I'm moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Yagowski, seconded by Mr. Karanka, out of what fund?
Doesn't say that.
It's up above, at the beginning.
You all might wanna consider economic lit, because the capital improvement plan, we're gonna, we have a line item for two million dollars for health insurance, it's gonna go before the commission, and it's for two thousand and twenty-four and two thousand and twenty-five. So, I'm just giving you the recommendation.
Got it.
Mark, is that you?
I'm good with that.
I'm good with it, yep, alright, economic development lit. All those in favor say aye, oh, wait, 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 nevermind, roll call.
Councilman Cunningham.
Nay.
Councilman Karanka.
Aye.
Councilman Rosenbaum.
Nay.
Councilman Keel.
Aye.
Councilman Yagowski.
Aye.
Councilman Mullenauer.
Aye.
And Councilman Novak.
Aye.
Five ayes, two nays, motion passes.
Next item is Lapeur County Sheriff requesting transfer.
Excuse me one second if I can. Otter Sabos, just think, I'll have to leave here soon, but will you make sure to discuss with them if the wages of salary goes negative, we won't be able to pay with that being adjourned?
You, you mean the item, the previous item that did not pass?
The item that was tabled that we're not discussing now.
That's what I'm talking.
Next item is Lapeur County Sheriff requesting a transfer, office supplies in amount of three hundred dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Mr. Cunningham, seconded by Mr. Rosenbaum and Mr. Karanka, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Next item is requesting an appropriation from County Sheriff's Continuing Education Fund for service charges, other services and charges in the amount of fifteen thousand, Mr. Rosenbaum and Mr. Cunningham. Any questions on that one? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Roll call, no, there's no roll call.
We don't need, oh, got it, sorry.
False alarm.
Next item, which we will need a roll call on, is finishing off the sheriff's pension fund, ninety-five thousand, nine hundred and sixty-six dollars. Where would you like to finish it off from? Lit economic development?
I make a motion to, no, at Riverboat, because there's enough funds, and that's where we've been paying for it in the past.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, out of Riverboat, second, second by Mr. Karanka. Roll call.
Councilman Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Councilman Novak.
Aye.
Councilman Cunningham.
Nay.
Councilman Mullenauer.
Shname.
Councilman Yagowski.
Nay.
Councilman Keel.
Aye.
And Councilman, can't read that, Karanka.
Aye.
Four ayes, one abstention, two nays, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is Lapeur County Coroner requesting appropriation from the Coroner's Autopsy Fund for services and charges in amount of ten thousand dollars. This is coming out of your fund.
Motion to approve.
Wait.
Can I explain what's going on here? This is an in-and-out account, it's a four thousand account, I send a bill to whatever institution for the offender. They process it, send me the money back, I take the money, I send it to the pathologist. Apparently now, because we've been doing it wrong for years. They say I have to come for an appropriation every time we receive money from the state to pay the pathologist. My thing was, sometimes it takes the state two months to send a check. If I miss a cutoff date to come in and ask for an appropriation, it's gonna be another two months before this pathologist gets paid, he's not gonna be happy. So what we're asking for is the ten thousand dollars to start this fund, it's gonna be an in-and-out, whatever comes, whatever is in there at the end of the year is gonna, if there's no other bills outstanding, will stay or go back in?
So, members of the council, I've prepared an ordinance, which I'll bring to you next month, establish in this prison autopsy fund, and so you would cede that fund with the ten thousand dollars, and that way the, the bills can be paid on a rolling basis, you, you know, the fund will receive reimbursement from the state. And then it will, at the end of the year, it will not revert to the general fund, and that way the monies will be there, and the autopsies can be paid for. The autopsies are five thousand dollars a crack, so you really cede the fund with two autopsies.
This is for the prison autopsy, we don't pay that much for.
Right.
These are the ones we get reimbursed.
Go ahead, Mike.
Okay. I'm supportive of this, but I have a problem. On the amounts available for funds, it says that we have thirteen thousand and change in it. And the fund balances on page three, says that we have three thousand in it, which is correct.
Are you asking, do you markino?
No, I'm not asking.
Okay. Okay.
Anybody who can answer that? If one is supposed to support the other one, then it should match.
Okay, I didn't know what you were talking about when you said thirteen thousand. That three thousand some odd dollars that's in there has, I don't know where it came from, it was there long before me, I think it was there before Bob Cutler. I don't know what happened, if money got put in there. By mistake, but if you look back over the last years, every year at the end of the year, that same amount is still in there, and it just keeps rolling over, we never use it, because like I said, this is a money in, money out account. So I don't know where that extra three thousand.
And that three thousand won't even pay for one autopsy.
Right.
So in effect, we're giving you ten to pay for two, and that three would just stay in there basically, right?
So at some point, we just need to appropriate an odd number to.
Yeah, take that three thousand or whatever's in there, if, because if nobody can figure out where it ever came from, take that and subtract it from the ten thousand and appropriate.
Or move it back.
Or move it, move it back to where it's supposed to be, I don't know, because like I said, it's every year. Since I've been here, that amount is always in there, and it just rolls over and rolls over because.
It's around the corner.
We never use it, I mean.
The, I'm, I'm gonna make a motion to approve with the assumption that there's the ten thousand in there to pay for it.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum.
I'm sorry, could I have, do I, could I ask him a question? You're saying that there's ten thousand in the account right now?
No, I'm saying, I'm saying I have two different, no, I'm saying where we wanna pull the money from.
Okay.
I'm saying I have two different numbers.
Okay.
And the difference is ten thousand.
There is ten thousand dollars in the account right now that we received back in September, but I haven't been able to pay the pathologist yet.
Appropriating that money out of that account.
To pay the, to pay the outstanding pathologist bill.
Right.
So if you have an amount of ten thousand and an amount of thirteen thousand.
I just have two different.
It's not transferring money into it, we have one paper that says there's only three thousand dollars in there.
Right.
Another one says there's ten thousand.
Right.
Or thirteen thousand.
Right, because we put, or there was ten thousand dollars that came in, but I haven't been able to pay it out, because they won't appropriate it anywhere.
This is only appropriation assuming.
I think you can assume that the thirteen thousand, three forty-nine is accurate, because it's, should be adjusted for any claims or potential claims on that fund.
Alright.
I can't assume.
Is that a motion?
It was my motion, I said that.
Alright, so a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Mullenauer. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Didn't need to do, I mean.
No, no, no.
Yeah, just.
Not new money.
Right, Lapeur County Juvenile, thank you, thank you. Lapeur County Juvenile Probation Department requesting appropriation. From Indiana Probation Fund, so this is appropriating within their own fund.
Motion to approve.
Second, thirteen hundred and ninety dollars, motion by Mr. Cunningham, seconded by Mr. Karanka. All, uh, questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you, the next item is the Lapeur County Prosecutor, this is. Appropriations for the deposits received for reimbursable grant.
Yes, sir. APS with our contract with the state, where we provide APS services.
So this is a deposit coming back in?
Yes, sir.
What's your pleasure?
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Karanka, seconded by Mr. Cunningham. For the sixty-two thousand, one hundred and seventy-six oh-seven, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. The next item is requesting appropriation for the deposits received for reimbursable grant for adult protective services, in the amount of thirty-one thousand, twenty-eight dollars and eighty-one cents.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Karanka.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cunningham, all questions?
Yeah, the number. The numbers don't add up.
Twenty-three, six.
Well, they do not, do ten.
That forty-five is.
Health insurance is probably not twenty-three grand, Michael, it's probably twenty-seven hundred or something like that.
Okay, um, then, as adjusted. The net amount of thirty-one thousand dollars.
Yeah, that's probably it, there's probably an extra number there.
Looking at the worksheet here, health insurance is three thousand, seven hundred and five dollars, thirty-eight cents.
Yeah, so the two there, it's hanging.
Two shouldn't be there.
We apologize.
A little better. Alright, so there's a motion and a second. As amended. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next item, continuation appropriation reimbursable receipts for adult protective services for. Personal services, health insurance, an amount of six hundred dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, seconded by Mr. Cunningham, is there any questions on that one? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Next item is requesting appropriation for deposits received from reimbursable grant for the prosecutor for victim's advocate, in the amount of twenty-six thousand. Nine hundred, forty-eight dollars, forty-nine cents, motion by Mr. Rosenbaum.
Second.
Second by Mr. Karanka, any questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Next item, requesting appropriation for deposits received for reimbursable prosecutor's PCA fund. In the amount of five hundred, seventy-six dollars and seventy-four.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum.
Second.
Second by Mr. Karanka.
Question, what does PCA stand for?
PCA is the, it's a, basically our cut, a small cut of what the amount, the monies that we get, we receive. In child support, so if we collect a certain, a small sliver of all the monies that we collect.
DCA, what's it stand for?
I don't know, off the top of my head.
Okay, alright, I.
If you don't know, then I feel so bad about not knowing.
Alright, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Been requesting appropriation from the prosecutor's. Pre-trial diversion fund. For capital purchase for the fire door, twelve thousand dollars.
Out of a different fund.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cunningham, seconded by Mr. Rosenbaum. Any question?
Just clarification, this is Fire Door in Michigan City Courthouse, located back of your department?
Uh, toward the front.
Towards the front.
Okay.
Towards the front.
We are, we already have a contract, or well, we have bids that we got already. We were just waiting for this to, before we went forward.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? I'm sorry, I was thinking I had to do a roll call again. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you just look at him again?
Lepore County Highway Department requests appropriation from Cume Bridge for service charges, engineering consultant, Bridge 39 located at 525 East over the Little Kink Key River in the amount of 203,000 dollars.
Yes.
Pushing to.
You're right.
Perfectly.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum. Second. Second by Mr. Karanka. This is an appropriation.
Go ahead. Which firm got the, uh, the contract for this bridge work?
Uh, SJCA right now, they're, they're, actually, we have an order, the contract, you guys will sign it. There's the low bid on the contract. SJCA is, they were.
We'll sign what? We don't sign bids.
No, the, no, the contract for the engineering firm to do the consulting.
Commissioners will sign it.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
We don't bid.
Right, right, I'm sorry.
Contrary to public belief, we don't bid.
I do that. I served the council for 25 years. I know, I'm sorry, yes. The commissioners would sign the contract.
Some people here don't understand that though. But anyway.
And the other ones that signed it. So, yeah, SJCA was the low, uh, consulting firm on, for the design of the bridge.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, you're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? It's an appropriation out of there. We don't need to. It's a spending money.
Is that, oh, is that?
It's not an additional appropriation.
It's not an.
It's not an additional appropriation.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Thank you, Jay.
Thank you very much.
Next item is Lepore County Recorder. Request an appropriation from the Elected Officials Training Fund for service charges for education and training in the amount of 10,000 dollars.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum.
Second.
Second by Mr. Karanka.
Yes.
I'm looking at the balance of the Elected Officials Training Fund tonight. It's 16,530. That's for all elected officials in the county.
Um.
They don't all qualify.
Not all of them, no.
Yeah.
Counsel. For counsel, it's a, a state called conference. And then, um, the five offices, surveyor, uh.
The, the constitution ones?
Yes.
Yeah.
The constitution.
So, not, not all elected official.
There's only five offices.
Right, but the state also allows to take, uh, like a chief deputy or assigned person for training. So, let's say a assessor wants to take one of the deputies or office workers to be trained in a specific area, um, that can be covered through that fund.
My point is, if there's, let's say there's five offices, I was assuming there were 10. If there's five offices, that's about 3,000 dollars per office. And you're asking for 10 and you're one of the smaller offices, correct?
This is.
Right, this is, we're not going to use all of it. It's just that we don't have to worry about to the end of the year about running out and not paying for everything. Like, um, Councilman Rosenbaum just went to training, that'll be covered through that fund, uh, things like that.
Mr. Cunningham? It's the reporter's office, it's for the other.
She administers.
Correct. Yeah.
That would've made the whole thing likely.
He asked that question, but it's okay.
Thank you.
And like the last AIC conference that.
Yeah, we got it.
Yeah.
Got it.
Any other questions?
Do you have a motion? Yes. Yeah, I did.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Thank you.
Next item is Lepore Adult Probation. Requested additional appropriation from Lit.
I need.
Riverboat Opioid Wind Tax ARP for personal services salaries in the amount of 18,655.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, we were looking at where we're gonna make it to the end of the year and we weren't. And I talked to Rhonda and she said, the budget that I submitted was not what was approved. It was 20,000 dollars difference. So, what was approved, and she said, I don't know why the council or the auditor's office didn't pick it up, but we were 20,000 short for our salaries for probation officers and at least support staff along to that. So, we calculated what we'd need through the end of the year and it came up to 18,655.
And this wasn't spotted when we were the two people left out of the budget?
No.
It wasn't, it was spotted in January and we actually came before the council, uh, in January. But the council said, uh, they can wait and, and if they run out of money and then we can do an additional appropriation. I think it's in the minutes as well.
Should've said, when you run out of money.
You're running out of money.
Yeah.
So, now we know it's not 20,000, it's 18,655.
So, yeah, maybe it was good to wait, eh?
What's your pleasure?
I need to look at the balances, sorry.
While he's looking out, I'm curious, uh, the Lepore County Prosecutor just came up here and transferred the bar. Have to go back and look.
About 100 grand.
About 100 grand in six different accounts and he had enough money to cover it. And you can't cover any of this 18,000 from all your other funds.
I can only go for 10,000. I'm limited at 10,000. Take all the judges to approve transferring that kinda money into this.
So, you're good for the first 10?
I didn't say that.
Exactly what I heard.
That was hypothetical, Mr. Karanka.
You said you could do 10,000 without going to the judges?
I am, yes. So, but I, but I.
So, the motion would be for the eight, the remainder of the eight.
That's my motion.
8,655.
I didn't see probation fees listed in the request.
Well, you're gonna pay for that. It's fine, be, we're gonna change that to a permission to. So, we're only gonna, we would appropriate just the balance. Is that a motion, Mr. Cunningham?
I was joking, you know, I'm voting against it cause.
I know you are, but you have still motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to pay 8,655 dollars.
Out of?
Out of the Lit, I can't lie to the law.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Mullenauer. Any other questions or comments?
To recommend a friendly amendment to where we actually add the motions, whether it's a motion to spend or motion, or excuse me, not motion, a permission to spend to next month's agenda in order to make him whole.
But can we just do that now? We can, we can just add a permission to spend now?
Well, it's really not a permission to spend, it'll be an appropriation out of his probation user fees, just like Mr. Fagan came before us. So, you wanna put it on this month?
We can add it to next month if we need to advertise it. Yep. All right. But in the meantime, you have. Roll call.
Roll call.
Did we do a vote on that?
No, we're gonna roll call here.
Is, is, is 8655 enough, enough till the next meeting? Probably.
Better be.
Rhonda? We're gonna go in the red. I don't know.
Well, if 18 grand will get you to the end of the year.
I think Matt does have.
See, I have a sociology degree. Just saying.
Roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Councilman Rosenbaum.
Nay.
Councilman Yagowski.
Nay.
Councilman Keel.
Aye.
Councilman Mullenauer.
Aye.
Councilman Karanka.
Aye.
Councilman Cunningham.
Nay.
And Councilman Novak.
Aye.
Four ayes, three nays, motion passes.
Thank you.
Speed, nice shirt.
And I.
Next item is Lepore County Drug Free Partnership. Uh, regarding the recovery residents of Lepore County, they're seeking 750,000 dollars.
Good evening, members of the council, members of the community. Mickey Webb, Lepore County Drug Free Partnership Director, um, here as a representative and spokesperson for the Recovery Residents Initiative. I'm joined and I'm asking our committee and leadership to please stand. And I know you're very busy and you may not have had a chance to thoroughly read your packet. Um, I think there's no discussion on need and Mr. Novak has already advised that we need to keep it brief. Um, but Lepore County is a federally designated high intensity drug trafficking corridor. That's a federal designation. The CDC identifies that Lepore County has had a 44% increase in overdose between 20 to 2022. And for those family members of the 32 individuals autopsied with overdose deaths last year. Our request, um, I'm old, but I still have some fighting needs. And I'm joined in my fight by our Recovery Residents Committee. Because of that, we're fighting for those that may not be at this point in their life because of the disease of addiction to fight for themselves. I direct your attention to your packet and the broad base of community support. In 2021, the commission prioritized ARP funding, specifically, one of the things listed was a recovery residence, Lepore County, which we do not have certified recovery residents. Porter County has several, St. Joe County has several. And I think the disease of addiction impacts everyone here in this room, whether it be a friend, a family member, an employee, a spouse, perhaps yourself. It knows no race, it knows no gender, knows no socioeconomic status. But it's something that this group, who I've come to work with over the past, past year, has become very passionate about, about this need. The commission prioritized this in 2021. Your packet includes the letter of support from Franciscan. I direct your attention also to the packet where we have a commitment from Ton and Blank for the architectural and engineering fees, which can't be cheap and also a, a support of a reduction in general construction cost as well as assistance in their securing support of the trade unions and additional, um, support within and consistent with their mission. We have the support of Franciscan. We have the support of a physician, member of Michigan City County Council, or City Council, Mayor Angie, area judges, uh, the sheriff and the police chiefs, and I call it the big three, Lepore County Sheriff's Office, Michigan City Police Department, City of Lepore Police Department. We have the support and a funding support from Unity, who will help guide us in our grant solicitations. United Way, 320 Recovery, which is the recovery home for this, hub for this region, where they're pledging an actual in-kind contribution of peer support of 100 hours. Um, Swanson Center, Health Link, Dune Brook, WARE, standing for We All in Recovery, the PACT Center, uh, the Center Township Trustee, the Open Door Adolescent Health Clinic and Youth Service Bureau, who all see the impact of addiction on kids that they serve. Life Changes, who see the impact of addiction on those with developmental disabilities. Um, a petition from WARE membership, who were present at one of their meetings this past week. Choices Counseling, uh, First United Methodist Church, Peer Recovery Specialist, Colleen Henry. I also direct your attention to your packet. And this is something that you received at the, this partial, uh, this, this afternoon, Steve, I believe it was sent out, um, where it gives you the guidance document for what restricted opioid funding is supposed to be used for. Page one, section four lists recovery residents as one of the core strategies of what the restricted dollars are to be used for. And our last check was that there is 515,000 in opioid dollars restricted, 24,000 in opioid unrestricted. I know that you're faced with tough decisions as people come before you with wants and needs. Mr. Cunningham, who knows my son, may know that he may want that 280,000 dollar new pair of Jordans. The mom and me would say, do you really need this? And I know as you're faced with those tough decisions on wants and needs, I think we can document the data that supports the need in Lepore County for recovery residents. That is not debatable and I think that has bipartisan support. Um, we're joined here today, John Gilmore from President and CEO of Ton and Blank can help address any questions that you may have regarding their contribution toward this project. We also have Judge Friedman, Mitch Peters, John Gilmore, Steve Iret, Marika Bailey, Community Corrections, Devin Jones, Health Link, Tyra Robinson Walker, Board of Directors, Lepore County Drug Free Partnership, Kitty Jastneski, Director, um, Executive Director, CEO of Swanson Center, WARE, uh, Donnie Allison, Kiana Allison, Colleen Henry, who also wrote us a letter of support and pledging their support, but also their contributions. To each of us, we can give something. And I've asked, when we did our workshop with the council, what is your legacy gonna be? I'm gonna ask anyone here, and Mr. Gilmore, can you speak specifically to Ton and Blank and Franciscan?
Sure, but thank you. So, I, I'm John Gilmore, I'm President, Ton and Blank Construction. Uh, Ton and Blank is owned by Franciscan Alliance, so I can speak on behalf of them as well. I'm also the Chairman of the Unity Foundation, so I've got a lot of hats here, um, in this thing. Fully support this project. We're doing a current project for the Respite House Organization in Porter County. We're able to raise over 1.5 million dollars in in-kind contributions for that project. We propose the same delivery method for this project. We've already committed to doing all the design work, all the architectural and engineering work at no cost. So, that would get it started. So, we're fully behind this. Personally, I'm behind it. My family's been affected by this, as many families have. So, I can tell you, from being a Lepore County resident all my life, that this is needed in this community. We all know we have a problem and this is one of the solutions. And I think that together, we can get there and we can get there very economically. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council. I know I've spoken to you before and I know in general, you're very supportive of, of this project. We also do have, uh, Mayor, uh, Angie's, which we did have Mayor. Mayor, Mayor Angie's, um, office, uh, assistant here, um, she, uh, Mayor Angie has also indicated they will be stepping up with their own Michigan City opioid dollars. When we came to you three years ago, I brought Mitch Peters with us. Uh, in the time that we have been working on this, Mitch has been involved with, I think, probably two additional, um, projects over in Porter County. Uh, I brought Mitch here just, just basically to give you an idea of, um, we will be working with him as well as Mr. Gilmore on coming to you next month with an actual budget. We have been working with Franciscan, um, very closely and they are very supportive in terms of looking at pieces of property that they're willing to donate. We do not have that information for you today, but we would like to ask for an intent to spend so that when we come back next month, we'll have those figures for you and can, can basically delineate why this is the amount of money we're asking. And as, uh, Mickey said, there is 515,000 in restricted. This is one of the few, uh, asks, I think, that, um, that have been brought to you that qualifies for that restricted. I'll turn it over briefly to Mitch.
So, I was thinking about getting on the county council, but probably not. Um, in another county, don't worry, so.
Porter County, they got more money in Porter County.
Yeah. Um, since I've been coming here on this project and I fully support it and, and will walk hand in hand with the judge and, and her committee to get this done. I am in the process with Ton and Blank and the City of Alpeireso of concluding a 10,000 square foot homeless shelter. I walked through it today, it'll be done by the end of the year. And I'm just overwhelmed and feel so blessed every time. But I built, including, not I, but we have built two and have a third project for a women's halfway house in the works. So, I can, and already had one existing. So, I can't tell you how essential this is. There's a need in the community, it's in your community, it's in our community and it's in every community. And it's more cost effective to attempt to address it. You can incarcerate this problem, we know that from our involvement in the criminal justice system and the coexistence with mental health and all of the things we can do and, and this committee is committed to doing and Ton and Blank is committed to helping you construct this. And I can't tell you what a huge advantage that has been on this most recent project. The, the product that they have, have put out there is the doors. I, the doors were on it when I showed up this weekend, the outside doors. I've never had doors like this. I've never had doors like this. I mean, this is going to be quality, and you will be proud to be a part of it. So I don't know how you get this approved for 750,000. I know that you need to do that. I would do it tonight and move forward. But how you do that, you just, you need to do that. The community needs it, people are still dying. And with fentanyl and everything, I also sit on the overdose review committee, I sit on a lot of committees. But every overdose has fentanyl in it, we have to address this problem. And this is where it starts. You can't, you put them in prison, they come back worse. You put them in jail without a treatment plan of where you're going to move them to, it doesn't work. They go right back where they've been. And I've been doing this now with the help of my ex-wife, who runs them, and my daughter and my board since 2009. And the difference we've made in the community, when I get a text from someone that, you know, I have seven years clean today, thank you, someone that I talked to in jail that didn't even want to go to treatment, and we got them into treatment and the progress they're making in their lives, and the difference it makes in the community. So this is a community, we do it as a community. They can't do it by themselves, they need you. They need Ton and Blank, they need me. They need the experience, they need the treatment providers. We've got that in place for this project. This project is ready to go. And it couldn't be any more ready, thank you.
And just to confirm, this is a one-time ask? This isn't a, there isn't an ongoing, because it's, they're self-sufficient once they get to?
Yeah, there's some funding mechanisms available. There's, you know, I get community support, there's foundations, there's grants. There's things that support these things, absolutely. They pay a fee to live there. So now the homeless shelter is going to be a little different, but that's another story. This is a halfway house. So it's a one-time ask. The first one I built, the county gave me 490,000, and I told them I would not be back. And I didn't even go back for ARPA funds. You know, I sat on the ARPA committee where they decide how to disperse them. I didn't even go back for ARPA funds. So yeah, it's a one-time, and it will sustain itself.
Thank you.
I have a few questions that might assist the council if possible, probably for Judge. Or some, what's the, what's the census going to be? How many folks are you talking about? And how does somebody, how would somebody get into the facility? Are they referred from drug court, or are they, how is that to work?
Sure. We're looking at a maximum of 20 males, okay? And there's going to be a referral system, it's going to be similar to respite. In other words, people will come from either the jail, they will come from a referral out of treatment. There will be, I think, a mechanism to come there other than those, but those are going to be the main two sources, from treatment or from jail, or a referral from a court.
So is Recovery Works going to help fund this? And FSSA, and so the actual funding for the facility?
Correct.
Okay. Besides LaPorte County Council, I hear you saying that Michigan City is also going to?
Michigan City has?
Any other municipalities?
Well, we've gotten certainly a letter of support, or at least a commitment of support to, in general, support the idea from LaPorte. But we don't have, we did not ask Mayor Dermody, simply because we're looking at locating this in Michigan City.
And my final question is, anybody know what the next tranche of restricted funds is going to be in January or February or March?
That's scheduled, opioid?
Opioid restricted.
There's a schedule out. I mean, I'm sure the auditors, everybody received it when it first came out. I think it was an estimate.
Well, I guess the point is, if we have $500,000.
It isn't 500,000, there's 415,000, $74.
Okay, $400,000, you know, I don't know that you need to commit, you know what I mean? You can commit in stages if you know that those monies are going to be available.
And the unrestricted fund has zero balance in it. So your numbers, these are?
These were as of Friday.
I know, right. Well, these were?
No, these are 1015.
These were prior to Friday.
You have any idea how many you'd need to staff, that 20 men?
There's a, it's 24-hour staffed, I'll let Mitch address this.
We have modeled, and we've provided all of our policies and procedures in our model. We have a director, and in some, in one instance, the director actually lives there. And then we have assistants who live there as well, and they're brought up through the ranks. So you get people that become functional, and they stay on as assistants. Some we've had stay for as long as three years. And they make a very minimum wage with room and board, and they work during the day, and then they supervise in the evenings. And it's a model that works well for us and has the entire time.
So there are people that are trained to treat there too?
They have all the training, our director's a peer recovery coach, certified peer recovery coach through the state. We're a state-certified halfway house. So the state accepts this and acknowledges this as our model and a viable model. It's been a viable model. Our overhead is fairly low, we run two houses. One holds 16, 17, I think, with staff. The other one is 20 plus three staffs, so 23. So what's that, 40 people? Our total budget for everything, food and is 300,000 for both houses anyway. But that is everything, and we have a mortgage on one of them, so.
Now, the Valparaiso isn't open yet, it's still?
We've got two open, the homeless shelter.
There's two respite houses that are open.
Okay.
The homeless shelter.
The third one. Homeless shelter that is under construction.
Yes, and then I'm going to, the homeless shelter is going to be called Daybreak to unconfuse us, and then we're going to build Kathy's Hope after that.
Which is a female halfway.
It's going to be a female halfway.
Thank you.
And if I could just mention as well, due to Mitch's help and some others, we have almost gotten this place fully furnished in terms of bedding, kitchen appliances. So, you know, we're ahead of the game with that respect, which is very positive for us.
Your packet also includes a letter from IUN School of Social Work, where they're committing interns to be able to work in the program, in that internship. Tyra Robinson Walker, Director of Treatment, LaPorte County Jail, is also a professor at IUN. And through her efforts, and she's been able to help secure that commitment for interns to help support that. We are going to operate as a level three facility. It's a state-certified facility, which would require certain state guidelines and staffing ratios. But at the same time, it allows us to become sustainable with Recovery Works dollars, assuming those individuals qualify.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmore.
Mr. President, just off to the side, Commissioner Grahamos, can you come up just for one second, please? Yeah.
Not the hot, Mr. Gilowski calling.
Thank you, absolutely. Yeah. Ms. Grahamos, did the commissioners approve this?
I believe we did.
For a project, for a project? I'm asking, hang on, I know, I, got it. For a project.
I believe we did, yes.
And then, was that a couple of years ago? That 2020?
It's in, it's a copy of it in the?
Last year, time last year.
It was?
We've, I've sat in on some of the meetings. I know Mr. Merzinski, I don't know if he's on, but he's sat in on some of the meetings, and it's been something that we've, Mr. Novak's been on it. We've really supported it, we've talked to?
I get it, I'm just using the reference that if we're going to use the ARP money, we have to have a commissioner project, and then?
It was approved and stamped by the commissioners on?
November 5th.
November 17th, well, yeah, it was stamped on by two of the commissioners. One must not have supported it, but?
But I think you grinded up again last year.
November 5th was the agenda date, yep, 21.
Okay.
So this has been on the books for a while.
I'm a little older than most of these people, so my memory is not 100%, but I believe when we had our first joint meeting of ARPA funds between the commissioners and council, it was generally supported by both parties.
And the amount was $800,000 originally.
So our last question is, Mr. Staples, how much money do we have in the ARP fund to use?
Well, after, we didn't spend anything today from it, so it says 1,245,000. We would strongly recommend using opioid restricted first, since it's more restricted in its uses than ARP.
I understand.
Mr. Gilowski, also, I don't know if Mr. Novak told you, but you all committed money to a project that I think is going to come back to the council.
Correct, 1.5 million. But I guess I have a question, and it's my answer, your question. My question to the auditor's office is, if the judge contacted the auditor's office and was told that there's 515,000, and there's money in the unrestricted account, and that doesn't reflect what we have here? Because our packages came prior to Friday, is that?
If you'll remember, your packages, when you're given a total, it takes out anything that's appropriate.
So the number you gave the judge was incorrect?
They have two different numbers.
So the number you gave the judge was incorrect? It wasn't the actual amount in that fund to be spent?
To be spent, no, but if I gave it to them, or who gave it to them, but it probably was the actual cash balance, is what my guess is.
So 415,000 is a more accurate number?
Yes, but that is?
Zero and zero.
To figure out, that does, so it's not usual that we would give that to a department. It's usually done for a council meeting. What was that, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
You got that off the website? Okay, but maybe there might be some appropriated as she stated, so that, yeah.
I don't, you have wrong.
May you, Mike?
Yeah, there's a, yeah, there's a few things. One, totally in support, and we're going to try and get the motions going in a second. I also learned that Indiana Criminal Justice just released a new grant that's available for furniture, employees, payroll. So there's a whole new wave of funding, and there's over 40-something million dollars in it. So that's another possibility to go along with this. I know that they never pay for the construction, for the physical facility, but learning, and I just learned that today, and it probably just came out within the past couple of days. And I just want to make sure everybody hears it, there's even more hope. And even the state recognizes that there's more hope for doing this. And so are we looking for a motion of support, are we looking to do this tonight?
Motion of support.
Motion of support.
You can only support.
I'm going to make the motion of support until we have some, until we get your final numbers for next month, and then?
And I can figure out where we got to put it in that way.
Yeah, so I make the motion.
Motion of support by Mr. Rosenbaum. Second, second by Mr. Mullenhour. Question?
Did you have, did you state Michigan City's amount, that said they would promise or not?
They did not.
So that was just the mayor's office saying that they were considerate?
Correct, we are going to the council.
So when we come, when we come back at our November meeting, there should be some unanswered questions. We might have a firmer thing on the property and also Michigan City. And then the Healthcare Foundation, who's been a big part of all these ongoing meetings, still has not committed their dollars, so they're going to be committing dollars also.
Okay. I just want to thank this group, because I know how hard you've worked on the, on this, how many extra hours you put in. I know Steve's driven a truck over to Porter County and stored things, and I kudos all of you that put in that time.
He's just writing his name.
All right, nope. All voters favor say aye?
Aye.
As opposed? Thank you.
If any of you would like to tour the respite houses or the new construction project, I'll give you my?
Mitch is happy, Mitch is happy to.
Yeah.
Call John, we got John's number.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
He'll give you just enough.
Thank you, everybody that came out and all your work on this, and?
Thanks for staying the whole time.
Hopefully we get this through, yeah. Appreciate it. Moving on, LaPorte County Council requests an additional appropriation from ARP for the Michigan City?
Go ahead, finish my line.
Commission on Social Status African American Males for $4,000. What's your pleasure?
I have a technical question first. When this was appropriated, it was listed as African American males of LaPorte County, and now we have a different name.
This is the correct name, right?
Michigan City Commission on the Social Status of African American.
I don't think that's an issue, Mike.
As long as it's not initial, as long as we're not doing anything.
Nope.
Okay. Mr. President, social status?
The name, the first name, I've given a letter to the, by?
Okay.
Thank you, very much.
I just want to briefly add that I believe it was close to 50 participants. I want to give thanks to John Boyd, and I can proudly say to you that all the kids have 100% attendance rating. And none of them are in trouble with, getting in trouble in school, they all go to school, so that's the best thing about this.
Thank you for the pictures, I shared it with the rest of the council.
Yes.
That was?
Yes, and just the last thing I wanted you guys to know, because our last meeting, we approved to go to our city council to ask that the county commissioners and council become appointing authorities. So that will give you the opportunity to appoint someone who you like, or whoever you want to?
We don't like anybody up here.
So it could be somebody from the resident, or whoever you want, from wherever. So that will, I'm hoping that'd be on the next agenda of Michigan City, but that's it.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve out of ARP funds, because they're the only place we can make a decision.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, second by Mr. Karanka, is there any questions?
We'll need a roll call for that one.
Thank you.
Roll call?
Councilman Cunningham?
Nay.
Councilman Gekowski?
Nay.
Councilman Mullenhour?
Aye.
Councilman Keel?
Aye.
Councilman Rosenbaum?
Aye.
Councilman Novak?
Aye.
And Councilman Karanka?
Aye.
Thank you.
Screwed up, five two.
Next item is LaPorte County Juvenile Services requesting an additional appropriation. Capital purchase for transportation vehicles not to exceed 167,260 dollars. You have the floor, sir.
Yes, sir. Approaching the council, good evening. We have four vehicles that need replacing. I sent everyone information, and I hope that you received it via email. We've got a 2013 Dodge Caravan that has 111,000 miles, 254. We have a 2013 Dodge Caravan that has 109,884 miles. We have a 2010 Chrysler van that has 67,374 miles. And then we have a 2007 white Dodge van that has 47,118 miles, but it's been out of commission. Also, before we make this request, I want to respectfully bring to the council's attention that in December, January area, we wanted to come and ask you for vehicles then, but we were sent information about Enterprise and filled out forms, and that never came to fruition. And so we're at a point right now where we need those four vans immediately. I took them, went to the garage, our county garage, and spoke with the gentleman named Sam, who looks at all of our vehicles, and he agreed 100% with us that all these vehicles need replacing. If you didn't know, because I don't think we've ever come, it's been a long time since we've come before the council and asked for any type of vehicles. At one time, it was funded by the DOC, but they no longer do that. Those vans that are used for transportation of residents to hospitals, anytime a youth is injured or something happens to them, they must be transported to the hospital. Anytime a youth is restrained, they must be transported to the hospital. And every youth that comes to our facility has, to have TB tests. Also court appearances, we, transportation occurs every Thursday and every Tuesday. Every Thursday in Michigan City and every Tuesday in LaPorte. We also have statewide placements, residents who require life assistance for issues such as drugs, suicide, depression, sector may be placed in specially limited time group homes. So we utilize those vans for statewide placements as well, DOC transport, and also for professional evaluations of the residents. And keep in mind that all these things that I'm mentioning can all happen concurrently, and that's why we need the fleet of vehicles. We also have two NOVA programs, one for LaPorte, one for Michigan City. And what that consists of is two of our employees going to pick up residents, bring them to the center in LaPorte, and then transporting them home. And in Michigan City, we have the same process. And these happen on a daily basis, Monday through Friday, where they'll pick them up and bring them back home. We also have a GPS program that I failed to mention, and that's for any resident that is on GPS. We have our community supervisors who check in with them and see how they're doing, go to their homes, make sure they're all right. And also in addition, juvenile probation, they also utilize our vans. I went on the statewide site and looked at the ward recommendation, and what they had was a 12-seat passenger van. And the cost for that 12-seat passenger van is 50,486. and the cost for that twelve seat passenger van is fifty thousand, four hundred and eighty-six dollars and thirty-eight cents. I also looked at a link that I was sent by Mr. Di Martino um, from Sourcewell, and all the vans that we were looking at, uh, did some research and found the top four vans based on reliability from car and driver and what would suit our needs, and none of those are available at this time. Um, I also went locally, I went to Magnussen Chrysler, and also to Honda Bozak, and they gave me estimates, um, for base level model twenty twenty-five vehicles. Uh, the twenty twenty-five Honda Odyssey was forty one thousand, eight hundred and fifteen uh, dollars, the Chrysler Pacifica was thirty nine thousand, eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Uh, we really need those vans. Um, the primary issue with a lot of them is they're rusting out because they're parked outside and three hundred and sixty-five days a year, and, and they, they can become unsafe. And for the transportation of our, our juveniles and residents, and, uh, that's our request before the council.
It's a pleasure.
I have a few questions, if you don't mind.
Sure.
We, we, I, I, I wanna tell you the speed and, and responding was, uh, incredible, thank you. And I just wanna go over a few things so everybody gets the air. Um, currently, your fleet, if I remember, is six vehicles?
Yes, we have six vehicles.
So we got a couple, as I heard you say, just or just can't be, you know, they're not repairable. Um, but I do wonder, because I always try to think down the road how we would like to, like we do with the ambulances and, and some other other places we've asked them to kinda do on a rotational basis, so that we don't get caught doing four out of six. I was wondering if there's any way for us to do two now and two next year, but I need to hear, I need you to, you know, answer that, think that out with me, so.
Yeah, re- respectfully, um, I can see doing three now and one next year if we're gonna be guaranteed that vehicle. Uh, remember, we had proposed to come before the council at the beginning of the year this year, but because of the enterprise situation, which kept getting pushed down the road, we're looking at a year later, and we still don't have vehicles that we needed uh, a year prior to, and so that's why I respectfully ask the council to consider, uh, three this year, um, at least three, and then we can look at one for next year. But the two and two would, would, would hinder what we are trying to do. And remember, the vehicles are used concurrently. We could have someone at court in Michigan City, someone in Lepore.
Yeah, so that was my next question, on the average day, how many vehicles are, are on the road?
We could have all of them on the road, and remember, we're down one vehicle. One of these vehicles is just dead. It's been dead since December of twenty twenty-three. It's sitting in our parking lot, and it's there, so we've been scrambling.
And is there any attempt to, um, trade them or trade them in for?
Is there any?
Is there any trade-in value, if there's any, however?
Uh, it would be very low, and I haven't inquired about that since we, I still have to figure out how we deal with that since they were DOC funds. Yes.
Yeah, that's.
I was gonna come up, as soon as you were saying that, we have to be careful, but we cannot trade those in, and that. The funding can go, you could sell it, and the funding can go back to your thing, but we can't use the money ourselves.
Okay.
Got it, okay.
You have to find which vans were actually DOCs.
Three vehicles would be a hundred and twenty-five, four forty-five. If you just divided it by four and paid for three, but that's, that's the high-end vehicle.
The high end.
I mean, this is.
Yeah, I, I've actually, the, the difference between the two vehicles, if we went with the Honda Odyssey, that'd be a hundred and sixty seven thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars. If we go with the Chrysler Pacifica, it would be a hundred and fifty nine thousand, three hundred and forty-eight dollars. Or if we just looked at the single vehicle, it would be thirty nine thousand, eight hundred and thirty-seven. So there are some savings if we went with the Chrysler Pacifica.
Is that the one that had a sunroof, moonroof? Yeah, I wondered about, I wondered about that when I read that, um, I don't know, I know there's packages, but I would suggest, I wouldn't think you'd want a vehicle with a moonroof.
Remember, the vehicles that we chose were their base level models. The way, that, that is the base level model for Chrysler, and it just comes with the package at base level, it comes with it. It's not something we said, hey.
No, I, I realize that was probably a package, but maybe there'd be something that, to me, that'd be a waste of money, you know, unless you. But then also, I'm wondering, you, um, you've been, I thought, I thought there was two of them that were down. Uh, just, you're saying just one?
We have six total vehicles.
Right, I know that.
Two of them are, are well, one of them is down. We have four vehicles that the county garage said, you need to replace these four vehicles, 'cause we're spending exorbitant amounts of money keeping them under repair, because they keep breaking down for various reasons.
Uh, I know that, I talked to them out there also.
Yes. So we have four, we have four vehicles that need to be replaced. Two of them that, we have a total of six in our fleet, uh, two do not need replacing.
You've been operating with five, all these, what, several, couple of years now?
No, we've been operating.
How long's that one been down?
It's been down since December of twenty twenty-three.
Okay.
Yes.
So you've been operating with five, then?
Correct.
Um, not six, and, uh, ones, is one equipped with a cage or anything?
Yes.
And was that one of the ones you're gonna have to?
Yeah, that's the one that's down right now.
So you have to get somebody to install and?
Correct.
And that'll fit in these other ones?
We don't know yet. We don't know. More than likely, it will not fit into the vehicle.
I have a question for Guy, does this, this has been approved by the commissioners? With the price, I mean, it's not, they're not going to state QPA.
Mister, it's been before the commission, he, he can approach the council.
So my, my question is.
Go ahead, what's your question?
Does the, does the price of a hundred and nineteen thousand, five hundred and eleven meet the letter of, he got two prices? Because I think there's only two vans, does that mean, or can we get, check the state QPA price, because I'm sure there's a price that.
You need to, uh, but I believe.
Again, you said they weren't.
Yeah, the ward recommendations.
Sourcewell wasn't available.
Correct.
The state QPA, you checked?
Yes, I sent this to you.
Yes, you did, and what's that say?
That's a Ford transport, twelve transport vehicle, and that came in at fifty thousand four hundred and eighty-six.
That's the only van they had on the state QPA?
That's what I saw, from the link that I was sent, I went there and looked for a transportation van that would fit our needs, and that's what they had.
So, you can't, you, you can't bypass the purchasing statute. No, no, I'm, I'm, I'm just saying to say that there's something that's, that's local. You, you, you just can't do that, we wanna make this work. Now, I know that, that Ford dealership or where they got the, the, the electronic Fords, those were on a QPA. So, and, and.
I think there might be something on it.
And I remember in the past that there, we had many Dodges that a local dealer that was approved on the, the QPA, so there's gotta be something there on the.
I think the difference is, he's looking for a transportation, transport van, whereas it would just, these mini vans are just mini vans.
Yes.
You know what I'm saying?
We were looking for what was cost-effective, and keep in mind, I also went to the county garage and said, what are you able to fix? What are you able to deal with? They recommended the Honda and the Chrysler, and also the, this vehicle.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
And Honda is made in US, it's made in Alabama, so you're good with the Honda too, if we can find one that would meet the qualifications of the QPA.
Can we, let me ask you this, could we hold this over till next month and we can make sure we got everything done? I know.
My, my, my.
I know what your preference is.
Is to get it done now.
I know it is.
Uh, and as I brought it earlier, we, this, I wanted to do this in December.
We're gonna get it done, we just need to make sure it's done running. Mr. Yagowski.
Adam, had to give you a first, okay. Uh, I, I know we're going back and forth, so our garage is Ford, Chrysler, GM, uh, qualified, so they could easily fix a Ford as they could fix anything else that's on there, 'cause most of the time, they take it back to the garage anyway. To the Ford dealership or whatever you're doing with it. Since you already have one vehicle, the Ford, would you be willing to at least go with that one right now till we can figure out your bidding? 'Cause that one is a certified vehicle you can get right now if you want. Let's go with one baby step at a time, and then we'll figure out what you can get from the state on, on your, on their buy program.
Okay, so you're, are you telling me that when I?
I'm suggesting, I'm not telling you nothing.
No, no, and.
Are you suggesting that transport van that you got the state QPA on?
Yeah, you already know one vehicle qualifies. Is that, would that?
Is it too big of a vehicle for you?
Would that work?
Actually, it, it is too big of a vehicle, you know, I went there looking.
Sorry, never mind.
It's, it's too big of a vehicle.
That's what I thought.
I know, but I was asking questions here.
And what, what, the, um, because we're a juvenile services center servicing kids, the type of vehicle matters, you know, their parents matter.
I, I don't disagree with you, but I'm trying to help, I was trying to help you, but if that's not gonna work, that's not gonna work.
Right, and that, that van was fifty thousand, so I was trying to save the county some money.
I understand that too, but this is not.
I don't understand, I don't understand appearance matters, I mean, fifty thousand dollars and a, and a decent sized vehicle, I mean, yeah, I'm just confused.
For, for our purposes, because it not, it, we don't, a- as far as a typical transportation van, let's say like the sheriff's department would use, they would have compartments to put kids in the back with no visibility, closed off, no outside view.
You don't want that?
No.
Well, is that what this is?
No, these are, these are passenger vans.
Well, then there, then there, there is outside view then.
Yes.
But it's like, it's too big, it's, it's like a.
You're talking about the.
Twelve or sixteen passenger.
They're twelve, they're twelve, you know, they're big, large vehicles, and so, and they're more room than what we, what we actually need.
Maybe that's the one you'd wanna cage in.
It's, it's still more than what, what we would need, those are for, if we have a transport, um, like, right now, we have probably seven juveniles that are adult files. And, uh, just transportation, transporting them, um, if we had to go on a long trip, if we have someone who is violent, physical, so forth and so on, it'd still be a lot of van just for one person. But we do need a secure van, normally, the, the physicality that may have be involved is the transportation of one person. It wouldn't be multiple people that we would transport for a, that would need the cage. We only have one vehicle uh, that has a cage, because that's, uh, rare and far between, but it does happen.
Yeah, so let's go back to the need, right? The need is, is four vehicles, but what's the necessity of each vehicle, right? How many seats? Is there restrictions, as you were talking about, um, you know, size, you don't want tour bus? Right? But, but how many people are we talking about transporting at any one time, and how many YSWs or other plays would be with this individual?
No, as far as our NOVA, everything fluctuates. NOVA could have anywhere between one, um, it could have, uh, four, five, six, and plus, when we transport for NOVA, we always have to have two employees. You've gotta keep in mind that transportation involves a minimum of two of our employees, along with the kids that we have to transport.
So seating for six is what it's sounding like?
At least, yeah.
All right, seating for six, well, is that, how many of these vans?
Seven, eight.
Okay, so there's several rows of seating there, right? That, that brings us down to why we're why we're down selecting the vans and not being, you know, like an SUV or something like that, 'cause my first thought was base level Explorer or something of that nature, and ask Mr. Heeg in the back there, Sheriff Heeg, who buys these on a regular basis, where we would find some of these that aren't the police interceptor models, obviously, but if there's dealers that work at a rate that's gonna be less than what we're seeing now, so eight seats, passenger model?
Yes.
Okay.
So would, would a different type of vehicle work besides a van?
I, I think from our research and looking at cost-effectiveness, I, I think.
I mean, interceptors are expensive now.
I think if, I, I don't think that.
No, I'm just saying.
Interceptor or would, would have enough room for our purposes, they, they wouldn't have nearly enough room for.
I get it.
Yeah.
So, so, what's that?
Thanks, Adam, could you get, could you get Hank up after you get, ask your question? Thanks, Bruce.
No, so, uh, again, I'm gonna suggest that, and, and I personally will work with you to try and get this through the, see, make sure that the state QPA is exhausted, if not, we at least get other prices, so it's a comparable price on these vehicles for the, for the, uh, our November meeting, and we'll have it done by then. So if, if the council would entertain a, a motion of support for at least three, and then we can get it taken care of so that we're meeting the letter of the law. Well, he's not gonna say anything different. I'll call on him, you don't call on him.
I'm just helping.
I know you are.
Helping anyway, I can't.
Appreciate that.
I need to help.
I might not like what he's got to say, though.
Uh, well, one of the points is the fact that we're also entertaining the, um, enterprise fleet management for potentially for next month, right? You said, talk to the rest of us and see if there's a possibility of that being on the agenda, so. Leave it in open.
You left that question that was asked.
A question was asked, thank you.
Yes.
So let me, it, it, so you're looking, what you're suggesting is?
Motion of support for three vehicles.
And one for next year.
And one for next year.
So does that?
We don't wanna, we're not gonna, we're not gonna bind the council, we got a whole new council coming in next year, so we're gonna, we're gonna give you three, and you're gonna have to sell it. I, I don't mean a whole new. So.
Again, keep, keep in mind, we're dealing with vehicles that are aging.
I agree, I agree.
We needed them in December of twenty twenty-three.
It just means we can't vote for it next year, we can't, we, we can't commit for that.
You better take the three, I was gonna suggest two. Take the three, take the three. So, so I would entertain a motion of support for the three, and then we'll come back at the November meeting to finalize this. Okay.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Karanka.
Second.
Second by Mr. Rosenbaum on the question.
And to clarify, this is a motion of support just indicating that we're giving like our favorable inclination courses, not as a go-ahead to start making.
No, had we had, had we had state QPA, good numbers or state QPA, we'd be moving forward right now.
Okay.
But that's, that, that's the caveat that we're. And you're going to then discuss it, okay, with him? We talked about it last, yeah.
Mr. President, that really quick, I promise. Mr. Hag, you, can I?
Can you step up, please step up here, sir.
Gotta get you on the mic.
You didn't talk last time you were up there.
I was just gonna say that thirty-nine thousand for the vans that he offered, that was a really good price, I mean, considering we're paying forty-six, forty-seven for the police interceptors SUVs.
I know.
Well, I was just, we can't use a pretty good price.
Right.
And I also understand this was their government fleet rate, if that makes a difference. So.
And that could, that could be that it's their QPA.
So if they have a government fleet price, then they've had to go through some.
Right.
They didn't provide, they need to provide that info.
We just need to get that thing that says that, so, so we're right there. You know, we have a motion and a second on.
Mr. Campbell, what, what we did with the Fords that the, we heard about the electrified Fords, was that we just got an email from the dealership saying that, you know, we are part of the cooperative buying and it's government, and then we were good to go. So if that dealer, whoever it is.
So basically, what the council just wants to see the comparative rates from that, with what we have.
So I think Mr. Rosenbaum might have an amendment and see if this flies.
And, and if this works, I, I, I'd like to, that you just said they have a government fleet, fleet price, which may mean they may have a QPA. So in order to move this forward, I think we can change the motion to say that if it's a, a QPA, to go forward with, um, not to exceed a hundred and twenty thousand for three vehicles.
If it's not a state QPA, we'll be back in November with the proper documents.
Okay, so basically, the burden then is upon me to email all, all the members of the council and?
We'll, we'll talk, and it'll be, it'll be approved through the attorney's office.
Yeah, you don't have to go through us again.
Okay.
I'm trying to make it as simple as possible, that if you got, if, if, if it's there, do it.
The burden on you is to contact whoever you're dealing with at the dealership and get that information.
Should you go to you, Mr. Di Martino?
Me or Mr. Novak?
Yeah, we'll talk, we'll talk.
Mr. Campbell, you should find out that it is covered under a QPA or some sort of competitive purchasing agreement. Um, I, I'd at least appreciate an email just so we know that it's all buttoned up.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely, yeah.
So, good with the friendly amendment.
Go ahead.
However, we gotta figure out an account here. Is this? Lit economic development. So this is a condition.
Economic development.
Lit. That's what I agree with, so yes.
Okay.
Everybody.
All right, so this is not a motion of support, I'm sorry.
No, it's no longer.
This is a conditional, conditional appropriation.
Additional appropriations.
With conditions.
With conditions.
All right.
Just for clarity, the one vehicle that's remaining, I would have to approach the council in twenty twenty-five and start the process over, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And this was a hundred and twenty thousand. Is that what we said?
Not to exceed a hundred and twenty. And the other thing is, is those state Q P As are usually by the year, so you would need might need to get that.
And yet, the other thing, of course, is if you check to make sure that they weren't grant vehicles, because in your department, you're gonna have to sell it, retain your own money for the vehicle back. We can't use it for a trade in value for a regular car. That's what happened in the past. We've dealt with these issues.
Make sure what the regulations are on that.
Okay.
That way you can just get rid of them.
Right.
Get them out of. But you can't trade in a grant car for.
Not grant.
Not grant.
All right. All right. Roll call, please.
Councilman Cunningham. Councilman Yagowski. Councilman Mullenhour.
Aye.
Councilman Keel.
Aye.
Sorry about that. Councilman Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Councilman Novak.
Aye.
And Councilman Karanka.
Aye.
Five ayes, two nays, motion passes.
Thank you.
All right, next item is Lepore County E M S. Requesting additional appropriation for fuel, oxygen and base supplies, ten thousand dollars each and service charge reimbursement for paramedic class tuition of sixty-five hundred. And we're talking with Eric. This was they had a person that was currently in the class and instead of Lepore County, Lepore County would have paid for it if we'd hired him before he got the class anyway.
She went on her own. We take.
It's an incentive.
And she paid on her own and yeah, it's similar to what we did. I think maybe in February, we reimbursed one. They have to sign the two year commitment to us for us to reimburse it. So.
So we can take them separate all at once, whatever you wanna do.
The other two are just end of the year. You know, it's our fuel and the oxygen and just higher call value. You know, we use a little more, so.
Motion to approve out of Riverboat, all three.
Second. Motion by Rosenbaum, second by Mullenhour. Questions? Are there none? All in favor, say aye. All in favor to have a roll call?
Councilman Cunningham.
Nay.
Councilman Mullenhour.
Aye.
Councilman Keel.
Aye.
Councilman Novak.
Aye.
Councilman Yagowski.
Aye.
Councilman Karanka.
Aye.
And Councilman Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Five ayes, two nays, motion passes.
I have one small other ask. Per county policy, you guys have already approved for me to spend out of my donation and public outreach accounts last month. However, per county policy, if any of that's to involve food, I need to get your blessing. On December twelfth, this is also an invitation. December twelfth, we're gonna do an open house for the Provider of the Year and our fiftieth anniversary at the Health Foundation of Lepore, beginning at eleven o'clock. Open to the public, elected officials, past and current employees. It won't be anything big, so don't come thinking you're gonna fill out, but.
You need our permission or commission?
It's commissions or that?
I need both.
Both.
It says it's the blessing of the commission and the council.
Motion of support, second. Should be in the mouth.
Motion of support by Mr. Rosenbaum.
Second.
Sir Cunningham. Is there a not to exceed? Is there is a?
We can put one on it of.
Is a thousand dollars enough?
Perfect. Perfect.
Accept it.
So we have a motion of support not to exceed a thousand dollars to spend on this event for food. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Thank you.
Next item, building maintenance, request additional appropriation from the counts for electrical shortage in amount of two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. Good evening.
Good evening. Cheryl Ostinsky, I'm the Facilities Director and I brought Angie Davis up here. She I'd like to introduce you to her. She is the Assistant Director and she's in the field where I do the administrative. She's out in the field, so if there's any field questions, she's here to answer those.
Aye. All right. Mr. President, did you get a chance to ask about the elevator contract?
No, we just cut.
Sorry.
Talk about.
So I know that we have additional repair elevator, that's fine, but elevator fourth quarter contract, that comes out of the budget. Why? Why? Why is that not being paid on the budget?
Why you showed a whole fourth quarter?
Doesn't make any sense.
Because we had a repair for the control board for the doors in the museum, which was approximately.
That's not a contract. Hey.
Right.
You're in an elevator repair. I totally get this.
Yeah. It's been I pay elevator contract out of elevator repair. I do not pay it out of our contract account.
Because I remember budgeting that amount, so that's why I was asking, so.
That's how it's always been that I know of.
So if you have a repair, you don't have the money to pay your contract?
Something's wrong here.
Yeah, you may. All right, so we spoke early earlier this week, right? So budgeted forty-eight thousand dollars for elevator repair.
Yes.
So they've consumed the forty-eight thousand dollars on repairs and subscriptions and everything else, right?
Yeah, it's elevators slash repair. So we do pay the contracts and repairs out of that account. And so I paid Schindler, the contracts out of there. I paid three quarters of Otis. I paid elevator permits out of there and I've also paid the museum control board.
So your repairs exceeded the amount that you originally budgeted and you used part of the obviously the amount for the fourth quarter.
Correct. Correct.
Okay, your second question is your electrical. I know this has been switched around some and don't necessarily agree with it, but so service and charges. So we have the part where it's the fee that you pay Nipco, so on and so forth, and you have repairs. How do we? Okay, at the elevator, you can't explain how you threw all that together, but how did you guys explain how you put all this electrical into one big pot?
Okay, so first of all, I did revise the two hundred and forty-five, not to exceed two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars to a hundred and eighty-nine thousand five hundred. So electrical has always been electrical, whether it be utilities or, which I did speak with Adam about this, whether it be utilities or repairs, that has been going on for several years. We for any repairs, we only do have a wiring account and that is only budgeted eight eight thousand dollars. So.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
In the in the future for next year, and we might have to go in and tweak your budget first of the year or next month to to kind of separate that a little bit and maybe take a portion out of electrical and move it over into wiring? If that's to make it so it balances, so.
That would be.
Electric bill is electric bill, water bill is a water bill, so that it's easier to summarize.
That's something we discussed at length when we met. The other portion of that is just making sure that we have good, strong definitions behind what our accounts are meant to be for. If it says electric, I assume it's electric utility, but not everybody would have that same definition because it's not defined. It's just one word, so.
So I guess the last question, we met today too, same thing, the migration work.
That one's been removed.
Okay. I still make sure. Okay, thank you.
I like to make a motion for a hundred and eighty-nine thousand five hundred for electrical and then the other amounts forty-six twenty-five for elevator repair and elevator fourth contract quarter contract forty-six thirty-five to come out of Riverboat.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum out of Riverboat. Second. Second by Mr. Karanka. Any questions?
It wasn't it wasn't two forty-five anymore, right?
No, it's one eighty-nine five hundred.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Question. This relates to the as it relates to the electrical, about how much of that do you anticipate is work related as opposed to like utility bills?
It should all be utility.
Utilities, I am expecting to pay approximately two hundred and seventy more thousand dollars in the remainder of October. Approximately seventy thousand dollars and then November and December, a hundred thousand. Our electrical bills have been running a hundred thousand dollars a month.
I believe Mr. Keel's question is of the one eighty-nine five hundred, is that all going to pay utility bills? Or is that project or work also?
Also electrical repair, which I've kind of estimated, but it's it's kind of hard because we do have a few more months, but possibly around fifteen thousand.
You don't have anything right now? You're just saying in case.
I have some bills and I got some more bills expected to come in.
Okay. Does that answer your question, Mr. Keel? I thought it was.
Yeah.
I was kind of thinking it was all electric bills. Roll call.
Councilman Novak.
Aye.
Councilman Keel.
Nay.
Councilman Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Councilman Yagowski.
Nay.
Councilman Cunningham.
Nay.
Councilman Mullenhour.
Aye.
And Councilman Karanka.
Aye.
Four ayes, three nays.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is Lepore County Community Corrections. You need to get on the agenda sooner next time, so you're not. Just saying.
I agree.
Asking for service charge, oh, drug testing. We talked about this last month, didn't we?
Yeah.
We asked you to come back.
I'm not sure why it was placed on the agenda. I didn't request this.
You didn't request twenty-five thousand dollars?
We requested fifty-something last time and you gave us twenty-nine, I believe. I don't.
You said you thought you could get by with that, didn't you?
I did and so I'm not sure.
You had said that for the rest. That's why it's on there. Anything other.
You don't need it.
I'm not sure if we will need it or not.
But you can come back in November? You sit here the whole night? God bless you.
Motion table second.
Motion to table in a second. Make sure she gets on the agenda first next night. All those in favor of tabling this till next month in case she if she does need it?
Aye.
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 Those opposed?
Gosh, you could have said that during department head reports.
Oh, she is. Oh, request an additional appropriate appropriation to release budget funds from Community Corrections, Personal Service, Group Health. You're subtracting one hundred and fifty-six thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars and fifty-eight cents.
We were told we needed to do that in order for our budget to be approved downstate.
So how's that gonna be paid then? We're taking it out of your.
We were told we we over budgeted, so basically it just needs to be put back as cash balance.
So real quickly, are we talking your grant budget or our budget?
This is our project income, which is part of the grant.
Okay, all right. I just want to make sure. So we're pulling it out of that budget.
And putting it. It'll just be it's a reverting fund. It'll just go back as cash balance, not an appropriated amount.
Okay, so you'll still.
It's still ours. We could use it or ask for it again, but we just over budgeted for our health insurance.
For this year.
Bless you.
For this year.
God bless you again. You're the only one in this county that budgeted their. You should run for office, I'm telling you. You should. All right, so we need a roll call on this or just?
Are you spending more money?
No, don't, don't. I just look, 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 look. It's late. Just answer the question. Although is there a motion? Or to make this correct? Motion by Mr. Cunningham, second by Mr. Karanka and Mr.
Mickey Yagowski, because he and Mark. Marks.
Vote two to five. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. All right, any comments?
Miss Beatty, as your liaison, I respectfully apologize that you didn't just send me a text message earlier.
Yes. Mr. Yagowski.
Yes. You know, I've got you know that I won't speak for Mr. Cunningham, but him and I over the budget since we voted no for a lot of this stuff because we truly don't have the numbers. This is this is not the first time. We've gone a couple of years back where we don't we don't we we got a ten percent raise and we don't know about it till the following year and we're trying to make up for it. This year too, with insurance stuff that wasn't paid, wasn't put down. I have a motion that I'm I'm not happy with the situation of our emotional non-support of what happened with our budget process. This budget process has not been a good year for this year whatsoever, and the last three years have not been good because we have not gotten true numbers. We were in a meeting one time. What was it? We had four million dollars in a hole and before we left the meeting, we were three hundred thousand dollars on positive. I don't exactly mean bring it up, but I have no faith in this budget process. We had this last year. It's been one of the worst budgets I ever had and I worked with a lot of people before, but this was this 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 is just uncalled for for us to have to have these numbers and try to make decisions. So my motion is just that I have no support whatsoever in this in the budget process.
Motion of support by Mr. Yagowski. Second.
Motion of support or lack of support?
Lack of support.
Lack of support. Motion by Mr. Yagowski, second by Mr. Mullenhour. Is there any questions on that? Are there none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
One last thing here then. Then they.
You nay?
Correct.
So the last thing here is we supported the auditor with his decision to make some decisions again based upon he thought was right for the office. But now I got another case. I know this this person very well, Alan Serenick, and he he has now filed his suit for six hundred and fifty-one dollars. Us not being able to do simple things in our department, I as example, pay this type of bills, now we're being sued and by you know, before it's all over with, it's going to add up to a lot more money than the six hundred and eighty-one dollars. So this lawsuit was filed today against Mr. Stables. I would love to support and I had supported him to pass on doing his job, but this is just where we're going. This is not where it's gotten too far. And I'm making a motion. I understand that this is I don't know. How do you how do you defend this type of stuff is what my motion, not my motion, just my point doesn't make it on it.
Can I speak to this?
You can if you like it. I don't care.
Commissioner Mathias made an unauthorized settlement with Mr. Serenick. She had no basis to make a few years ago. Mr. Serenick is Shaw Freeman's former law partner and this is a political act on his part timed a week before an election to attempt to embarrass me. If Mr. Serenick would like to settle that amount and split it fifty-fifty and be done with this matter, I would be happy to do that.
I think that's needed to do because I mean, in the past, as you know well.
If you could be the the go between.
Yes, in yes.
We'll split the difference.
In the past, you know, we've done this before in the past.
We have. Thanks to your involvement. And we'll call it a day.
I believe several of us were involved in that stuff.
Yes, it wasn't just.
Yes, you were as well.
To say, I apologize.
A clarification. Mr. Stables, you're not in a race a week from now, are you? You said it was for political purposes to embarrass you.
Yes, it's intended to embarrass me. It's political. That's my belief.
So are you still involved in a race? How does it involve you politically?
I am supporting candidates publicly and.
Oh, I see. You think he's branched out to some police. I got you. Okay.
Yeah, that's what's going on.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Tuck it.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, second by Mr. Mullenhour to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?